Call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the January 6, 2025 City of Kalispell Council Meeting. Can I please have a roll call?
Councillor Nunley.
Here.
Councillor Carlson.
Here.
Councillor Gabrielle.
Here.
Councillor Graham.
Here.
Councillor Dowd.
Here.
Councillor Dahlman. Councillor Fisher. Councillor Hunter.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Glad you all got to figure out how to start it. We have our agenda in front of us. Looked council for approval. Mr. Nunley.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Your Honor.
Second.
I could ask for that to be amended.
Motion to amend.
Yeah, just to, after manager council reports, to close the session for ongoing litigation.
Make friendly amendments to show that.
Ready to the amendment?
Second.
Okay. All favor of the motion, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
opposed, like sign. Motion carries. We have four items on the consent agenda this evening. The first item are the council minutes from the December 9 and December 16 council meetings. The second item is Flathead Valley Community College Tennis Interlocal Agreement. This item considers an updated three-year agreement. The third item is acceptance of the state and local cybersecurity grant program award. This item considers accepting this grant for 255 licenses for cybersecurity awareness training. And the fourth item is confirmation of firefighter paramedic Camus Reinhardt. This item considers confirmation after completion of the one-year employment probation period. Is there any public comment on any of the four items on the consent agenda? Is there anyone else who doesn't think Camus is old enough to be appointed? Have a motion. Mr. Nunley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Make a motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second thing, Ms. Gabriel. All in favor of the motion, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Chief Pierce.
Mayor and council, just a quick little biography of firefighter paramedic Camus Reinhardt. Camus was born and raised here in Kalispell, and he's always been very active in the outdoor activities. And he knew that he wanted to stay here in the Flathead and give back to his community. So there began his journey of his career in the fire service. Camus worked at Evergreen Fire Department, Logan Health EMS in Cut Bank, Montana, and the Big Fork Fire Department. And he did this while attending the paramedic program at Flathead Valley Community College. Well, his hard work paid off, and Camus was hired for the Kalispell Fire Department. Camus recently got married to his wife Claire. Hi Claire, who has been his number one supporter every step of the way. Camus wanted to express to everyone here this evening how grateful he's been for to have such an amazing family and support system of friends and his coworkers. He is looking forward to coming, to the coming years, serving the city of Kalispell and the residents of our community. Camus has met all the requirements of the Kalispell Fire Department and the state of Montana in obtaining his firefighter one certification. Mayor and council, I present to you firefighter paramedic Camus Reinhardt.
Camus, it's been a few years. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
It's a pretty tough calling these kids, sir, isn't it? Counselor, remember when you were a kid at St. Nap's right over there?
Yeah, a while ago.
Hanging out with my kids. It's nice to see you grow up to give back to your community, so. Thank you. Appreciate you coming. If you want to say a couple of words to the audience, you'd like to see it. But welcome to the Kalispell Fire Department family. Just remember, every night when you're done, you've got to go home to Claire, okay? Okay, take care of yourself.
Thank you.
No words, Camus? This is your opportunity. It was your stage. Okay, well, let's give Camus another round of applause. All right. Now, if you want to stick around for the rest of the meeting, we promised a lot of entertainment for everybody. But if you want to get up and leave, you can do so, and you won't offend me. Okay, we have no committee reports this evening, so at this point in time, I'm going to open the meeting for public comment. Any individual wishing to address the council on items not on the agenda are asked to step forward, state your name, and give your comments to the council at this time. Everyone's watching the game at home? Okay. We're going to close public comment. We're going to move on to the first action item, which is Kalispell North Town Center Phases Six and Seven Final Plat and Subdivision Improvement Agreement. This item considers final plat and improvement agreement approval for 72.6 acres, including 23 commercial lots. Mr. Russell, presentation.
Mayor and council, I'll turn it over to our Assistant Director of Development Services, PJ Sorenson, for the staff report.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council. Stillwater Corporation has submitted a request for final plat approval of Kalispell North Town Center Phases Six and Seven. These phases contain approximately 72.6 acres and include 23 commercial lots, common area, and streets. The city council approved the preliminary plat with 29 conditions on November 6, 2023, under Resolution 6168. As shown in the first cover sheet, this is the final plat itself. All the conditions been met are adequately addressed. All infrastructure has either been installed and accepted or bonded for. Subdivision improvement agreement in the amount of $5,490,780.41 secured by a performance bond is included for the council's consideration. Just as an aside, everybody knows Costco was going up in this area, but this would be the lot we'd be talking about up in here and then extending down into this area through there. There's also a traffic signal that's included in the subdivision improvement agreement that would be going in this location just north of the cemetery. With that, staff would recommend that the city council approve the final plat for North Town Center Phases Six and Seven, as well as the subdivision improvement agreement, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Any public comments? Mr. Nunley, look to council for a motion. Mr. Nunley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Should I have my mic on here? I would move to approve Resolution 6168, a resolution conditionally approving the preliminary plat of Kalispell North Center, North Town Center. Phases Six and Seven described as a tract of land located in the northwest quarter of Section 30, Township 29 North, Range 21 West, PMM. Is that not it?
Nope, I'm sorry. The resolution was already passed with the.
It's just, it's just the recommendation.
Oh.
Just the final plat.
It's on the memo.
No, I know.
Mr. Graham.
I got it.
There we go. Don't go over it.
I moved that the Kalispell City Council approved the final plat for Kalispell North Town Center Phases Six and Seven, as well as a subdivision improvement agreement.
Second.
Second thing, Ms. Gabriel. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Your Honor. I opposed the preliminary plat on this proposal originally due to concerns about having kind of the the low-density sprawl of the Hunt Ranch area extending north of Reserve. It's not something that I believe is, is the right type of development pattern for our community. And so I'm just going to be consistent with that vote and also vote against the final plat.
Other discussion? No roll call vote?
Councillor Nunley.
Yes.
Councillor Carlson.
Aye.
Councillor Gabrielle.
Aye.
Councillor Graham.
Aye.
Councillor Dowd.
Aye.
Councillor Hunter.
No.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion carries. Second item, Bloomstone Phases Five and Six Final Plat and Subdivision Improvement Agreement. This considers final plat and improvement agreement approval for 13.8 acres for multifamily development. Staff presentation.
Yeah, Mayor and council, once again, I'll turn it over to PJ Sorenson, our Assistant Director of Development Services, for the staff report.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council. Kalispell National Multifamily LLC has submitted a request for final plat approval for Bloomstone Phases Five and Six. These phases contain approximately 13.8 acres, and they're right on the west side, adjacent to the bypass. The city council approved the preliminary plat with 30 conditions on February 1, 2021. With this plat here, north would be off to the left side. Phase Three has already been final plated, single-family homes budding up to kids' sports. Phase Four, if you recall, several months ago, we redid the preliminary plat for that, and those went to townhomes as opposed to the multifamily. The ones we're looking at through here are Phases Five and Six, which are off between Tree Line Road and the bypass. The preliminary plat included six lots through this area. They actually consolidated all of those into a single lot for a multifamily development, which also includes the plat to the adjoining street. Showing the first sheet with the notes, and again, Phases Five and Six consolidated into a single parcel there. And then this is showing that again with north off to the left side of the screen. All the conditions have been met are adequately addressed, and all the infrastructure has been installed and accepted or bonded for. There is a subdivision improvement agreement in the amount of $240,250, which is secured by a cash bond that's included for council's consideration. Staff would recommend that the city council approve the final plat for Bloomstone Phases Five and Six, as well as the subdivision improvement agreement, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Any public comment on Bloomstone Phases Five and Six? Look to council for a motion. Mr. Dowd.
Thanks, Your Honor. I moved that the council approved the final plat for Bloomstone Phases Five and Six, as well as a subdivision improvement agreement.
Second.
Second thing, Ms. Gabriel. Discussion on the motion? Roll call vote?
Councillor Nunley.
Aye.
Councillor Carlson.
Aye.
Councillor Gabrielle.
Aye.
Councillor Graham.
Aye.
Councillor Dowd.
Aye.
Councillor Hunter.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item is Resolution 6237, Support for the Raise Grant Application for Kalispell Bypass US 93 to Airport Road Improvements. This item considers council support to submit this grant application in cooperation with the Montana Department of Transportation to the United States Department of Transportation. Mr. Russell.
Hey, Mayor and council, and I'll turn it over to Jared Nygren, our Director of Development Services, for the staff report on this item.
Mayor and council, you may recall about the same time last year, you also approved a resolution to support for an application to USDOT for the same project. Unfortunately, we weren't awarded last year, but this is the last year of this program. So for FY '25, a grant application is due here at the end of the month. Hoping that we could get your support in order to proceed with the grant application for $25 million. For a total of about a, don't have the budget completely wrapped up, still working on it, but a $31 to $33 million projects to complete the south half of the bypass, which is also an integral component of not, of our overall transportation network and any future improvements in downtown Kalispell. Like I said, the grant application is due here at the end of the month. The county commissioner is also partnering with them. They also had this on their agenda and approved a resolution supporting this as well, and will work with MDT in the coming weeks to put this grant application together. As far as city staff time, we would be providing in kind time to put the grant application together, as well as any future administration that may come along with that, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Any public comment? Motion? Ms. Gabriel.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move Resolution Number 6237, a resolution of approval for the submission of an application to the United States Department of Transportation for a rebuilding American infrastructure with susta- excuse me, sustainability and equity, or a raise grant to fund upgrades to the Kalispell Bypass from US 93 to Airport Road. Second.
Second. Got it. Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote?
Councillor Nunley.
Aye.
Councillor Carlson.
Aye.
Councillor Gabrielle.
Aye.
Councillor Graham.
Aye.
Councillor Dowd.
Aye.
Councillor Hunter.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion carries. City manager report. Mr. Russell.
Yeah, Mayor and council, as noted, when we amended the agenda after reports, we will go up and have a closed session to discuss ongoing litigation. No action will be taken, and after that adjourns, may I come down and adjourn this meeting in totality, so nothing further will occur related to any type of action. Looking ahead, next week's work session, we will look at lead line replacement funding. Come back from the last time that was on the agenda, what potential resolution that would look like. Also discuss fire code resolution, or fire code regulations, and how that could be incorporated under a property maintenance action. Also talk a little bit more about property maintenance and what that could be, but that'll be on the work session items. On the 21st, we'll plan on, after the regular meeting, another subcommittee meeting on the trails and sidewalks, a committee that's been meeting, so. And then just this, as we're looking ahead, legislative session starts this week. Already looking at five bills, four of them dealing with TIF on TIF districts on Thursday. I haven't gotten into them all, but one of them's looking at redoing the definition of blight. Have a hearing on a bill tomorrow on voted levies by municipalities, where it wouldn't be able to pass a mill, but it'd have to be a dollar amount, which is problematic from, if you're doing it for operational costs. For example, if we had done that on the public safety levy, we wouldn't be able to increase that with inflationary components. So that's just what we're starting off with on the first week. So be a lot of time watching legislative hearing meetings coming up and passing in information as, as it comes forward. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Russell. Anything from council? Mr. Hunter.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. An article came out over the break about the lack of progress on some of the homeless initiatives that have been discussed at council. And I'm not really sure why that, that's the case, the, the lack of progress, but I do just want to step forward and offer, I'd be willing to come up with the agenda for the city summit with Whitefish and Columbia Falls on that and work with staff on getting that organized. I'd also offer to make recommendations for members of the Advisory Committee, Homeless Advisory Committee, and propose a mission and focus for that committee as well, to try to move that along and, and see if we can't get those things moving.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Anyone else? Mr. Graham.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Your Honor. So it's a new year. And over the last, you know, several years probably, I've been going through and contemplating, you know, what does my path forward look like on the council? And, you know, come to the conclusion that over this next year, this will be my last year of serving elected office for Ward Two. So I'm putting that out there because I want to give fair notice for other individuals in our community that are looking to possibly run for that seat, to give them ample, ample time to think about that and ask questions and see what it entails. So it's been great, and I'll obviously have more to say, you know, later on and everything, but. Yeah, that's it.
Mr. Nunley.
Thank you, Your Honor. It'll be sad to see you go, Chad. Chad, now that I see you sitting down there, I had just a quick question that I wanted to bring up. I don't know if you guys saw the, last week, there was a comment on Facebook about Woodland Park and how the domestic animals, the domestic birds are coming back in down there. It caused quite a, quite a commotion on, on the one page that I saw it on. So then I happened to run into one of the fishing game guys down at Fishing Game. And I know at one time when we did the whole thing with the, the ducks, and before, there was talk of maybe having Fishing Game with maybe some funding opportunities they might have. I was just wondering if we could revisit that maybe at some point this year?
Are you, are you talking about pond improvements or dealing with?
Pond improved, pond improvements.
So we are hopefully going out for an RFP on a park's master plan.
Okay.
And should be included in that, the conversation. Felt that it would be appropriate at that point, so hopefully we, once we start the process, we can have those conversations again. I know talking with them, they are still interested in those improvements, and there's funding available. There's also some other community members that would like to participate. Don't know what that looks like, but they've showed support for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Nothing? Nothing? A couple of things. One, just want to point out, the community, we lost a longtime member with George Ostrom passing away. George was a voice that I think a lot of us grew up listening to. And just want to let his family know, you know, they're in our thoughts and prayers, but I've missed his voice on the radio for a long time, and just knowing he was around was comforting now that he's gone. It's a little hole in, in our community, so just want to acknowledge that. He was an important part of the community, especially my life growing up, just, as I said, listening to him on the radio. But I guess we can say the, the Over the Hill Gang got another member hiking with them in a different place now, so. One other thing, or a couple of other things, Mr. Hunter, happy to have you look at it. I can get you in contact with Mr. Maul Feld and Whitefish. Yeah, see where you get with it.
Okay.
Go ahead and knock your socks off.
Okay.
Love to see Whitefish just change their zoning to allow for shelters, but, you know, maybe that can be one of those items that we address, as these other communities do some of those things as well. Third thing, the last thing that I want to bring up. I was pretty critical of the commissioners in December on 8/19, the fact that they were not putting it on the agenda. And they did end up putting it on the agenda for December 31. My big reason for pushing that is I think that this is one of those items that should have been discussed in the open. This could have been discussed all through last summer, through the fall, to see what are the real impacts of 8/19? And what, what does it really do? The end result, though, I think the commissioners probably made the right decision. And I say that because, and I say it many times with council, math is brutal. When you cap upside on a residence, or one, you cap upside to an owner at 1%, it's really hard to get a hold, get ahead with equity, especially when you start looking at the cash flow, the principal and interest, taxes, insurance, and maintenance and upkeep. I did run a spreadsheet, running kind of a rent versus own comparison on this. And it's interesting, after 30 years, if you put $20,000 down, because I'm assuming no matter what, you're going to have to put some cash down on a purchase, even with 8/19. If you put that $20,000 down and pay the same amount in rent that your principal and interest are in a mortgage, so the variable becomes how much is due from 8/19. If you do that, and you invest the $20,000 versus rolling it in as a down payment where your upside is capped at 1%, after 30 years, just running the math, you're better ahead by about $120,000 to be a renter with that money invested, because your equity in that home is capped. And there's no real definitions within 8/19. Can you buy out 8/19? Can you buy the money out from the, from the organization? What happens? The other thing in 8/19 that I found interesting, and I didn't hear the commissioners talk about this, but you team up with a community organization to manage 8/19. They put in money, tax money goes in to help with that down, the 8/19 portion. That portion is what gets the bulk of all of the other appreciation on that residence. So in 20 years, if it appreciates, the person's capped at 1% per year. All other appreciation goes to that money. When it's sold, in 8/19, there's a line that says that revolving loan fund, that organization is encouraged to put the money back into the revolving loan fund, not required. So there were some fatal, to me, there were some fatal flaws within 8/19. And I want to bring it up now, because especially hearing that the legislature is getting in, getting underway again. When we pass legislation in a crisis or in a short term without really looking at the long-term impacts of that legislation, we make mistakes. I understand the, the impetus behind this, I understand the desire, and there are some, there's some other intangible benefits that can be received from 8/19. But when you look at the math, to me, it's a no-win situation. I think one person I talked with when I had him review the numbers said, "It's almost like you're an indentured servant." You can't afford to get out of it, because you don't get enough equity out of it to pay, make a down payment on the next house. So I'll, when I, I'll finish up that spreadsheet with references. Mr. Russell, I'll forward it over, and you can forward it to council if you would, just to share that, in case someone sees holes. But when, when you, when you run the numbers, I'm not convinced it's a good deal. And with that, we're going to adjourn and go into executive session upstairs. Turn from exec, from, we returned, and with this, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.